Okay, good morning, everybody. We'd like to get started. I know we'll have guests continuing to join us, but we have a lot to cover and some great panelists, and so we want to start the discussion. Welcome to the 2022 In Real Life, In Person CITT State of the Trade and Transportation Town Hall Meeting. It's really, really good to see you all and to be with you in the same room. My name is Tom O'Brien. I'm the Executive Director of the Center for International Trade and Transportation at Cal State Long Beach, and I am also the Deputy Director of the Met Trans Transportation Consortium. Met Trans is a University Transportation Center partnership between Cal State Long Beach and USC, and Met Trans is the principal financial sponsor of the town hall. On behalf of my dean and the Associate Vice President for International Education at Cal State Long Beach, Jeet Joshi, I am pleased to welcome you to our 21st town hall. Since our first town hall in 1999, our goal has been to provide a forum in which to explore a key issue challenging the goods movement industry and the many stakeholders who are in some way connected to the industry. We strive to address these issues of common concern and interest to our community in a respectful way and in the spirit of education. This year's theme is "Chasing Supply Chain Sustainability." While the world awaits a clear victory over a global pandemic, the supply chain carries on. Disruptions and delays have been the big story in the news. We all know that. But the supply chain has been surprisingly resilient in the face of unprecedented demand over the last two years, and I think that's really the untold story. As the freight system navigates these challenges, it also continues to work toward the sustainability goals set out by the state and called for by local communities. Can we meet the pace of demand and move toward a zero-emission freight system at the same time? When it comes to sustainability, do we all speak the same language? Today, we want to tackle these questions head-on, and we start our discussion with a couple of key assumptions. We assume there's agreement on balancing competitiveness of the freight system and sustainability. The question is, how do we get there? Sustainability is going to be defined differently by different stakeholders, each of which has different priorities. Who is in a position to make the decisions matters? Who's making the policy and who's responsible for implementation? While the goals are in many ways the same, the financial models for sustainability are still under development, and that's one of the things we're going to talk about. And workforce and quality jobs is also a component of economic sustainability. And while our focus is on the region and the state, given the context in which we all operate here, sustainability has to be addressed at the supply chain and systems level. I hope by the end of our two hours together, we will have raised some awareness of each other's challenges and found some ways to discuss and move the dialogue forward. From an education and research community perspective, which is really critical to us at the university, we also want to leave here knowing what we need to be teaching and studying and researching so that we can play our role and contribute to the solutions. The town hall is the first of two activities that form Reimagining Freight Week. This week, tomorrow starts our three-day International Urban Freight Conference, which will feature a wide range of sessions on all things urban freight as viewed from a number of different perspectives, including economic, political, social, engineering, environmental, and through an international lens as well. We have 12 different countries represented on the agenda, and we welcome all of those, international and domestic, who have traveled here to Long Beach to be part of our Reimagining Freight Week. We have a couple of other guests I'd like to recognize. We exist first and foremost because of our students, and I'd like to welcome the students, graduates, and instructors from the Global Logistics Professional and Marine Terminal Operations Professional Program at Cal State Long Beach. Many thanks to you all and to the students in the room, and a big thank you to our dedicated instructors and professors. This year, the GLP program is 25 years old, and we have some new existing partnerships that we're working on that are going to allow students in our program to also pursue other industry-recognized certifications. Thanks to Angelique Logan and Crystal Moan from our college's Office of Professional and Workforce Development, who are great stewards of the program, and I know they'd be happy to answer any questions you have about them. I'd also like to recognize the members of the CITT Policy and Steering Committee. Their names are listed on the program, and I want to thank them for making today possible as well. They represent all segments of the industry and community, and we couldn't do what we do at CITT without them. I'd also like to recognize a couple of special guests, elected officials and dignitaries who are here this morning. I believe we have Bonnie Lowenthal, former Assembly Member and member of the Port of Long Beach Harbor Commission; Dr. Joe Liu, California Transportation Commissioner from the Port of Long Beach. I don't know if Mario is here yet, but Mario Cordero hopefully will be joining us. From the Office of the Mayor of Los Angeles, Eric Garcetti, Christine Peterson; and representing a number of the ILWU folks in the room, Ramon Ponce de León, ILWU Local 13 President, who you'll be seeing on the panel; and Floyd Bryan, who's the President of the Southern California District Council. So, thank you, all of you, for being here. We also want to welcome our various partners from industry and the community, and these include our friends from the Port of Long Beach Academy of Global Logistics at Cabrillo High School. The university and CITT are really proud to be part of this team helping to develop career pathways in logistics right here in Long Beach. Just this past week, we secured approval from the Long Beach Board of Education for a new 12th grade Career and Technical Ed Capstone class that will serve as college prep for the students in the AGL program. It's a case-study-driven class over two semesters, and it's going to give the students an opportunity to serve as their own supply-chain C-suite. This year, we have 20 students along with their instructors, Jim Dowding and Andrea Bautista. I cannot begin to tell you how much Jim and Andrea have done for the students, for Cabrillo High School, for the school district, and as a result, for our community and the industry that connects us all. Please join me in thanking them and say hello to the AGL students at your table. Thank you. I'd also like to thank our sponsors, who make sure we keep this event free of charge and open to the public. These include our principal funders for all Met Trans projects, the U.S. Department of Transportation and Caltrans. We will have 23 Caltrans employees here for the week's activities, which I believe is testament to their dedication and commitment to the resiliency of the state's transportation systems. We also have our Reimagining Freight Week sponsors, whose names you can find on the program and on the slides behind me. We thank you for your support. And our Met Trans associates. These are the folks and organizations that provide the core support for the Met Trans Transportation Consortium. As you all know, we can't survive on grant funding alone, and so we truly appreciate the support of our associate members. And now, onto the town hall. As we move through today's agenda, we encourage you to share your photos and thoughts on social media. Use the hashtag CITTTTownHall2022. Our Twitter feeds and LinkedIn pages are also on the slides. We want to generate some interest and continue the dialogue using social media. To help us get started, as always, we want to begin with a video to set the stage. This is a video produced by Dave Kelly and his great team at Advanced Media Production at the university within the College of Professional and Continuing Education. Dave Pluskat is in the back of the room archiving this event, and he plays a critical role in production and post-production of the video. AMP and Dave have won numerous awards for their work, including the town hall videos, and this year's, I think you'll find, is of a similarly high quality. He had the challenge of taking what is a very complex topic and distilling it into a very informative, and it's about 14-minute video that will set the stage for our discussion to follow. We'll then move on to our panel discussion, and at the end of the morning, we'll confer the Dominic Moretti Award to TTSI's Vic LaRosa. The formatting guidelines for the public Q and A are included in your program. We ask you to keep questions to the point and on topic. No multiple-part questions, and we ask that you're careful to keep it to questions instead of commentary. You can ask your questions by either submitting a card to one of the ushers that we'll identify when we get to that point or raising your hand if you prefer to ask by mic from your seat. Now, please enjoy the video to start our discussion.
First, the supply chain has become more complicated because of online shopping and the dynamics related to it. E-commerce emerged more than 15 years ago, but exploded during the pandemic because of the ease and necessity of having goods delivered to the front door. The impact on brick-and-mortar retail has been substantial and often devastating. According to the research publication Digital Commerce 360, online sales increased by 44% in 2020 and, for the first time in history, accounted for 101% of all retail sales growth in that year. All other forms of retail were flat or declined. Online shopping in 2020 amounted to 21.3% of all retail sales, up from 14.3% in 2018 and 15.8% in 2019. This phenomenal annual growth rate of 5.5% of retail market share by e-commerce never materialized before the pandemic. Previously, the typical increase was in the range of 1.5% and never reached 2%.
Before the supply chain crises that we are experiencing now, there was a real sort of adversarial position towards holding stockpile or safety stock inventory because of the cost. But now, as we've seen, you know, many companies gain market share if they had stockpiled inventory because they were the only, you know, company still standing to serve their customers, that relationship to holding strategic stockpiles of inventory will be different than it was before. That's maybe a crack in the paradigm, but I don't think there's a wholesale shift yet.
In 2020, established e-commerce businesses like Amazon and eBay and major retail chains with highly-developed online purchasing platforms were suddenly joined by many smaller businesses and local retailers in competition for consumers' dollars. Any product ordered which involved overseas manufacturing then required space on a container ship, a berth in a West Coast marine terminal, a truck or train to bring it to a warehouse, and then a last-mile delivery to the consumer's door. The multiplication factor in the dramatic upsurge of e-commerce has not reduced goods movement traffic, nor congestion, nor the need for warehousing space. Demand for all goods continued to increase through 2021, showing a two-year increase of above 20%, according to the Bureau of Economic Analysis. As more people work from home and lifestyles adjust, more goods are delivered to homes and neighborhoods, making the last mile a well-worn path. Compounding the problem, online retail has adopted a policy and practice of free returns, creating an incentive for consumers to buy and return products with a much more cavalier attitude than would be the case if the consumers had to physically return the products to brick-and-mortar outlets. Free delivery and free return may be good sales tactics, but those features can make the finality of purchasing a drawn-out process. Everyone wants to shop with maximum convenience, but no one cheers the prospect of a new warehouse coming soon to the neighborhood, especially hard-hit, our residents living in overburdened communities.
And we're talking about residential areas where trucks and containers are moved through, as well as railroads, and the impact that it has in the children. For example, they can't go out to play. They have to stay inside due to the diesel emissions. And most of our children in Wilmington have asthma. We're like one of the highest concentrations of asthma in the nation. So if you imagine having all this movement of goods, movement through a community of 55,000, the majority suffer from asthma already. They need to know that this is happening and taking place in Wilmington, for example. And I'm sure it's not only Wilmington, there's other places.
The conventional understanding of sustainability is measured by three different yardsticks: economic viability, environmental quality, and social equity. While those three considerations are clearly an essential part of the equation, there is more to the story than just those three. Consumer demand, access to vital products, changes in purchasing patterns, and competition for scarce resources can affect the supply chain and its ability to sustain the needs of an impatient and restless society. The organic nature of the supply chain's responses to current problems means that sustainability planning needs to include an elasticity factor, often not considered when establishing mandates and goals. Perhaps the most contentious topic within the conversation of sustainability is the specter of growth and what the concept of growth means. Growth can have various implications. To those with a business interest, growth is considered a positive development and a goal. Growth represents profits, as well as hope and confidence for future viability. It also usually includes more jobs and more opportunities which offer social mobility and societal benefits for workers in the community. This pro-growth position adopts an optimistic view that a rising tide lifts all boats. In that optimistic perspective, economic and social equity are positively addressed and dovetailed.
Maybe logistics and supply chain doesn't have to be a bad place to work if people don't want their communities. It is certainly an area that is ripe for the latest technology. It is a very, particularly as we implement more technological solutions, it can be highly skilled labor and highly trained labor. I think that, you know, a distribution center can be like a really state-of-the-art factory, the kind of thing that people want as employer in their communities.
From the non-business perspective, growth is often perceived as a negative. It implies congestion, more pollution, traffic, and a diminished quality of life in the neighborhood. For regions like Southern California, the prospect of growth faces fierce resistance and opposition based on the fear of harmful consequences for residents in communities slated for growth. This no-growth position assumes a zero-sum game is being played, where if one side gains, it necessarily takes something away from the other side. The environmental concerns take center stage as social equity is perceived as receding rather than progressing.
It is important communication at this time. It is very important to communicate effectively, truthfully, and with transparency, and not looking at one's best interests or the other one, because I think we are all in this together.
Sometimes, growth is misunderstood in reference to what causes it in the first place. Whether sustainable or not by traditional definitions, growth often happens for reasons which go beyond the mere encouragement of business and marketing enterprises. The massive surge in online purchasing, which occurred because of the pandemic, was not anticipated to develop so rapidly. Ultimately, growth in Southern California's freight delivery is determined by the consumers who also live in some of the neighborhoods which are objecting to growth. What has developed in the past two years is not so much a matter of businesses pushing cargo through the San Pedro Bay, rather, it is the consumers pulling their desired products through the ports. California's very aggressive greenhouse gas mandates and zero-emissions policies are moving the industry toward rapid introduction of electrification at all levels. While the mandates will result in less air pollution and a major overall reduction in carbon-related emissions, questions remain about the cost, the feasibility of full transition by 2030, and whether the abundance of electrical power required will be available at crunch time. There is also an equity concern regarding how electrification and related automation will affect jobs in the waterfront industry. Finally, it is clear there will be a conflict between an inflexible zero-emissions mandate with a hard and fast date and an organic supply chain which responds to daily and monthly challenges and is limited by technological advances. As a result, an argument is being made for a longer transition period to zero emissions. The solution could involve renewable natural gas or feature the use of transitional near-zero emissions technologies and fuels.
We know that the state of California and other like-minded states are pushing for electrification faster than some other states, and that's fine. We see that customers there are moving forward in that kind of way. We will be there to help those customers move into that electrified space. In other spots where it's a little slower, maybe the use case is a little different. Maybe we see that kind of incremental change going at a bit of a slower pace. But when we look with a long enough time horizon, clearly, this is the path that everybody's traveling, all major. OEMs have now started to move in this direction. We have been very clear about our targets for the year 2040, to be 100% electrified.
One silver lining of the pandemic purchasing experience is the mass education of the general population about the significant workings of the supply chain. Before March of 2020, few consumers outside of those directly affected by logistics spoke openly about it. Now, almost everyone has become surprisingly sophisticated in daily discussions about supply chain dynamics. Those discussions often incorporate resignation about the perceived "new normal", involving rapid price inflation, shortages, and long waiting times for needed items.
Sustainability doesn't have a set measure. It's not like a dipstick, and a firm can just go, you know, put it in. Oh, I've got enough sustainability, let's go on down the road. It's always going to change, so I think it will always be elusive in that, you know, what people demand from the companies they shop from will never just have a sustainability check-off. It will change with time.
Other important matters affecting the sustainability of the supply chain in Southern California include land use, involving urban and suburban planning. The state, cities, and local communities will have to make major decisions about the most appropriate utilization of available land. Those decisions will impact the efficiency of the system. Residential planning will need to be balanced with the growing consumer demand for products delivered from warehouses within reasonable distances. Supportive infrastructure is clearly on the table as well. In the end, a growing population, combined with a now certain future involving rapid e-commerce expansion, will push the supply chain to deliver more goods to more people. Consumers will be less likely to do as much driving to brick-and-mortar retail centers. Specialty items, such as clothing requiring a tailor's touch or a perfect fit, will be the exceptions. Otherwise, there will be fewer cars and minivans at the remaining malls, but more delivery trucks making last-mile trips. Will the net result be fewer greenhouse gas emissions? Will the issues of supply and demand and the factors involved with overseas manufacturing be addressed? One of the benefits of technological progress is the ability to analyze data going beyond limited linear human thinking. Artificial intelligence, quantum computing, and artificial neural networks hold promise in coordinating information from a 3D perspective. Perhaps this enhanced real-time intelligence can provide solutions for efficiency problems, congestion relief, planning concerns, just-in-time delivery requirements, inventory control, and other issues. Many questions still remain. Will sustainability continue to be a moving target as consensus remains elusive for the greater society? Or will sustainability simply be a potential rather than an actual destination in a final analysis befitting the tragic philosophers of ancient Greece?
Thank you. And Dave Pluskat in the back, and Dave Kelly, thank you for all of your work on that. It really helps set the stage for the discussion. And I think, given the fact that this is an educational forum, it's always nice to have a product at the end of the town hall that helps. We can share with audiences in education, research, industry, community. At this point, I'd like to invite our panelists to come to the podium. I think everybody's miked, we're good to go. I'll start with some... Oh, Heather needs to get miked, so, yeah, in the back. So I won't do the first question to Heather. I'll ask some questions here, and then we're going to open it up to the floor. While they're coming up, let me introduce them. Their bios are in the program, and I encourage you to find out more about their expertise. We have Paul Bingham, who's the Director of Transportation Consulting for S&amp;P Global Market Intelligence; Dr. Wilma Franco, who's the Executive Director of the Southeast LA Collaborative; Dr. Jen Giuliano, professor and the Ferraro Chair in Effective Local Governance at the USC Salt Price School of Public Policy; and the Director, at least for another month, of the Met Trans Transportation Consortium; Matt Schrap, the CEO of the Harbor Trucking Association; Ramon Ponce de León Jr., President of ILWU Local 13; and Heather Tomley, who's the Managing Director for Planning and Environmental Affairs, the Environmental Affairs Bureau at the Port of Long Beach. While Heather gets up, actually, I wanted to... It struck me that maybe I should ask Jen or Matt to maybe give a little bit of an overview of the state mandates that I referenced at the beginning and that are also referenced in the video. We have a number of people from outside of the state, a couple from outside of the country, and probably would be a good idea to provide some context to the discussion we're going to have and what California's been doing. So, does anybody want to take that? Heather, certainly, you could take that as well, too.
Sure. Can you hear me? Is this working? Okay. So, at the state level, there have been a lot of regulatory activities based off of addressing greenhouse gas emissions and the need to address climate change. And California has really set ourselves up to be a leader in that space and looking at ways that we can move beyond just the diesel technologies and move into zero-emission technologies. And so that's really driven a lot of the efforts and emphasis that we've had at the ports to move forward with zero emission, battery-electric, hydrogen-fuel cell technologies, and the demonstrations that we've been doing, in particular for terminal equipment and on-road trucks. That said, there's also a lot of activities at the ports related to what we can do for vessel emissions as well. And there was a... Within the last couple of years, there was an upgrade to the at-birth shore power regulation, and so moving into more control of vessels while they're at birth. So it provides a lot of the context for the things that we need to be doing here locally as we're coming up with the demonstration projects that we're working on and really setting our policies and programs and strategies going forward as we need to make sure that the activities that we're doing are in alignment with where the state is going. And so that's driven a lot of the timelines and a lot of the approaches that we've been taking, looking at different specific technologies.
Thanks, Heather. Anybody else want to add anything to that?
I would like to chime in, and that's a very great perspective, Heather. I think that that's extremely accurate. And as, you know, the landlord ports are concerned, it's really, as she alluded to, is taking that cue from Sacramento. And I swear, probably my favorite part of that video was when it said "inflexible zero-emission standards", and it flashed the "Welcome to Sacramento" sign. You couldn't really have anything more pointedly placed, in my opinion. We are up against a tremendous amount of pressure, not only from the sustainability side, whether it's BCO, beneficial cargo owner-driven, whether it's state mandates, whether it's own internal mandates by company, but, you know, we try to balance all of these things together to have a sustainability solution, which isn't necessarily always just driven by the ESG standards, but also from sustainability within a company. I will always say and have said for the last 17 years, probably the worst thing that can happen to you is losing your job. And when we start picking winners and losers based upon ability to, I guess, achieve some of these mandates that are put forth, you start to have a situation where folks are either exiting the marketplace, that being a truck operator who can't afford to upgrade their equipment to zero emission, or a beneficial cargo owner. their equipment to zero emission, or a beneficial cargo owner who decides to divert cargo to another gateway. Whereas they say they don't buy unicorn milk in Texas because they don't have the same type of zero emissions mandates or even near-term diesel emission mandates. So we're up against a lot of challenges and I think that Sacramento is the bleeding edge across the globe when it comes to aggressive policies, either on the health impact side for exposure to diesel particulate matter as well as the greenhouse gas side. So Heather has her work cut out for her, to say the least, in trying to meet some of these mandates that are coming from the state. But without that state authority, they're very limited in what they have the ability to do.
Thanks, Matt. You've sort of hit upon the first question, which was sort of getting the lay of the land for how each of these stakeholders, participants define sustainability and their priorities. So we've heard something from the port perspective, which has a unique role as in terms of a quasi-governmental policymaking, but also landlord. You heard from Matt's perspective from the trucking sector. Dr. Franco, maybe I could ask you to comment next. Obviously, you may see things a little bit differently from your role and the Southeast Collaborative. And maybe it's worth telling a little bit about, telling people about the collaborative as well.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me? Perfect. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for the invitation. So I represent the Southeast LA Collaborative. We're actually a network of organizations working in the Southeast region. So the way we as a collaborative, right, define the Southeast includes those cities between the 710 and Alameda and the 10 and the 105. So really that between freeways section, right? And then so for us, I think when we think about sustainability and how these conversations impact our community, right, is really looking at quality of life. It's really looking at quality of life. And I think part of the big piece for us, right, is also keeping in mind the social determinants of health, right? How does the SIP codes that our communities live in also impact their access to jobs, their access to social economic mobility, health, right, access to park, access to green space? So really thinking about as we have these conversations, right, how do we make sure that those people that are impacted the most, that have the lived experience are actually at the table and, you know, when these decisions are being made, right? So I think that's from our perspective, right, is really uplifting community voice and ensuring that they're not excluded from these conversations.
Thanks. Ramon, I know a lot of longshore workers both live and work in the port community and I'm guessing that it's probably fair to say that you don't see sustainability as a zero-sum game. It's possible to have both jobs and a clean environment. So what matters most to your membership?
Well, first of all, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. First of all, the video was spot on. It's probably one of the best I've seen and I think it deserves another round of applause for, very well put. It explains everything, even the accountability for even the consumer. Everybody is part of the supply chain. There's not one answer. First of all, the ILWU represent Local 13, most longshore. There's also marine clerks and foremen, but I represent the most of the longshore. Approximately 9,000 members, which is probably, I would say, at least 40% of them live in the community here, maybe 50 to 60%. It could be higher. But the deal is, we want what everybody else wants. We want environmental justice and economic justice. They should be equal and they should be looked at equally. There were some questions that you've given us before. Tom's kind of give us a little prep about what some of the things we're going to be, you know, talking about today. And one of them is like, who's the decision makers? Who makes the, who are the players in the game here? And there are several that have certain things. And if you look at the ILWU in the waterfront, you're looking at the sink being clogged right now. That's congestion. That's densification right now. So for all the automated people, that's densification. How's that doing? Not too good, is it? Well, anyway, we're the hub. We're the go-between everything. ILWU has broken records through the pandemic and we appreciate the accolades and our members will continue to appreciate the accolades because they continue to work six days a week, double shifts. We are processing now, within the last six months, we've processed about, we're going to be processing about 1,350 more registered. So the economic side of it is bringing more people into a good paying job. Okay? So there's, if you bear with me a second, there's some, several players here that I'd like to talk about. And so everybody can go away from here. This is us sitting here. I'm a 40-year veteran. It's all I do. This is what we live about. Most of us have the PhD in longshoring. That's it, right? So, and no disrespect to people that go to school. I have my daughters, one of them went to Cal State Long Beach, graduated. I love my girls. They've all went to school. I put my kids through school with this job because I didn't go to school. Anyway, you have the BCOs, which is a beneficial cargo owners. You have the railroads who haven't stepped up to the game, but we'll have to talk about that a little bit. You have the ports, which includes the labor in the trucking. You have the port authorities and then you have the PMA, which is carriers and MTOs. So you also have the federal and state agencies. They all have a part in what's happened and why we're here today. First of all, why are we here? That's the first question. And who made the decision to put us here? Is it somebody's fault? No, it's just the way things have evolved. Okay? The JIT, which means just-in-time delivery, is something that all of us enjoy. You type it on and you get it right at your doorstep or a business types it up and they get it delivered to, directly to them. The warehouse, usually in the old days, old dad used to throw the cargo on the pellet, it'd go to another warehouse, they'd throw it off in another truck, deliver it to a warehouse, and then it would be delivered to the store in the need. Well, let's check the warehouse. The warehouse anymore is the container. And now it's being stored on the dock. That's the warehouse. So we need to find a spot to move that. One of the answers is to move, to get this off of the docks as soon as possible. Shouldn't even touch the dock. What, we need an inland port for the time being and then later on, we need a rail system with bridges that takes trucks off the road and puts them in a different location, maybe an incorporated area. That would help everything. Now, let's give an example.
Ramon, I'm sorry, but there's so much of this that I don't know where to go. Okay. We're going to have, you've raised an issue that I'd like to have Paul comment on because he's sort of, you're suggesting that there's a system-wide challenge here, right? And so I wanted to see if Paul could comment on what he sees sort of the sustainability perspective, maybe from outside the region. And I know we'll have occasion to come back to some of the other things you're raising, Ramon.
Yeah, well, as everybody has said so far, you know, this has been focused on the community here in Southern California, but, you know, inherent in all of this is this is global trade. We're talking about this region is the gateway for North America, for Asian trade, you know, 40% of the international trade. So it's the entirety of the population of North America in some respects depends on this. And the majority of the world's population is outside the United States and this is a gateway for trade for them. And many of the companies that make substantial investment decisions depend on this region, maybe make decisions about whether to rely on Southern California or some alternative are not based here. As, you know, we're all aware, these large ocean carriers are not US companies. You know, they're not subject directly to the control, except where they are, you know, engaging in US commerce. And the investors and the decision makers being overseas oftentimes, that gets up to the level of, you know, foreign policy, of course. This is, you know, treaties and trade agreements, the Paris Accords on environment. Very big picture perspectives on global warming, on sustainability that cuts across, you know, not just the United States, but the entirety of the world. And for the decisions and the discussions that we have about what we're going to do for Southern California inherently is in that context because, you know, much of that trade could shift somewhere else. Maybe not tomorrow or even next year or even in five years, but in the long term, to have the sustainability on the economic side for the jobs here related to the industry, the dependence of this region in many respects on international trade, in some respects depends on that community outside of the region. So the decisions that are made here have to be made in the context of that. And Tom, let me make one more point is that that's not all necessarily something that leads to pessimism. There's a lot of optimism in that, that there are companies that are looking now, you know, has been mentioned, not just at purely financial performance for their stakeholders and their supply chains. And they're looking for leadership, they're looking for sustainability. And clearly, California from Sacramento to Southern California is viewed as a leader. And that in the long term can be an advantage for the region if that's taken into account in the decisions that are made. So Tom, I'll leave it at that and come back.
Yeah, thanks, Paul. And Jen, you've seen an evolution of this topic for as long as I've known you, right? We've both observed it and you've been, you've been in the trenches as a researcher. What changes have you seen when it comes to sustainability as a focus of supply chain analysis?
Thanks, Tom. And thanks, everybody. Those of you who have been here before know that my usual role is to sum up. So I have an easier job today because I don't have to talk. So I thank Tom for doing that. Yeah, you know, I kind of spent a little bit of time going down memory lane yesterday trying to prepare for this. And I'm going to be kind of academic for a minute and that is that we've been talking about sustainability for many decades, actually. And some of you may know that back in the old days, way back in 1987, there was this definition of sustainability that said it was development that meets the needs of the present without compromising the ability of the future generations to meet their needs. So that sounded really nice and smooth, right? But of course, that leads to a lot of interpretation. You know, whose needs and what are they and how do we know what's going to happen in the future? And those debates have gone on for, you know, as I said, many decades. And it's gotten to what you all have been talking about and what was talked about in the video, which is this concept of the triple bottom line. So basically, we want everything. We want, we want to solve the environmental problems. We want a healthy economy and we want justice for society. That's what we want. The trick is where do those circles intersect, right? So we can talk a lot about sustainability for the environment. We can talk a lot about economic sustainability and we can talk a lot about social justice. But the real trick here is how we put that all together. And I think in answer to your question, that's why we're here. Because that little tiny circle where they all intersect is pretty tiny and sometimes very hard to find. So I can stop here and we'll go on to another one.
Wilma, did you want to add something?
Yes, I did. I think, thank you, Jen, for your comments, I think, because it definitely made me think about one of the things that, you know, we oftentimes don't recognize, right, is that we live in very interconnected ecosystems, right? Like we cannot talk about, you know, trucks without talking about the environment, about health, like, and I think part of what I have seen, right, in the work that we do is that we also need to shift our mindset and our way of thinking about our own leadership, right? Because I think part of this is also not just thinking about, well, what is it that I represent and I'm going to literally die on that cross because I have to fight for that piece, but how do we, how do all of these issues affect all of our lives and how do we make sure that those that are being impacted come together and address this, right? And oftentimes that coming together that, you know, usually historically we may be at odds will continue to impact how we address these issues if we are unwilling to come to the table with a very diverse stakeholder group.
Thanks. I want to go back to maybe to Heather and Matt, something we talked about at the beginning and that there are, there's sort of a policy environment for developing these measures. Heather, the port has a unique role to play, but it's your stakeholders, partners that are implementing the regulations and the policies. And so I'd like to hear from both Heather and Matt, what do you see is sort of the biggest challenge to getting to zero emission from sort of the port side and then Matt from the operator, from the operator side?
Sure. And I'll just start by saying I really appreciate the comments that have already been raised. And I think we absolutely agree from the Port of Long Beach as well, that it really is, it's not just finding the balance, it's about looking at the ways that we can elevate all aspects. And so when we come up with programs and policies and dedicate our investments into different projects, we're always looking at ways that we can benefit not just the economics, but also benefit the environment, benefit the communities, benefit the workers and bring all of that together. For us to be able to thrive long-term, we really need to be supporting all aspects in equal measure. So it's really the goal that we're trying to do with our Clean Air Action Plan is to establish goals and policies and pathways to get there, make decisions about where we're going to be investing our port dollars to help support that, and then working with the industry and the community and bringing all of that together. We're setting goals and policies for where we want to go, but we need to work together collaboratively to figure out how we can get there in a way that we can all benefit. And so the Clean Air Action Plan has really been a model for that and we've been really successful over the years. The original Clean Air Action Plan was adopted in 2006 and we measure our progress on the emissions inventory every year so that we can track how we're doing and where we need to continue to focus our improvement efforts. And our last emissions inventory for, I believe it was 2020, showed that we were able to reduce diesel particulate matter emissions by 90%, all while cargo was able to grow more than 20% over that time. And we've been able in that same time to be able to invest in the community through things like our community grants program, through the work that we're doing with helping in the local high schools with the logistics program. And we're looking forward to the investment that we're going to be making in the training campus to be able to continue to support training for future generations of workers to work on this new cleanest equipment. So trying to bring all of that together, but it really is collaboration and partnership. It's working together to be able to get there. As you've mentioned and as Matt mentioned, we as the Port Authority don't own and operate any of this equipment directly, but we do have an important role to play as a facilitator and to help provide some guidance and to focus some investments for how we move forward so that we can get there.
I would agree with pretty much everything Heather has just said. And I think that it was mentioned in the video and she had mentioned, it's been mentioned here as well, is that we're all in this together. It's not a zero-sum game. It can't be. And as I like to say, you know, if we either hang together or we hang separately. And when we look at and we track the emissions reductions from the ports, those coincide with state mandates as well. Because while there was a clean trucks fee that really motivated purchase of cleaner diesel combustion technology, the backbone really came from the state. And when we think about some of these hurdles to full implementation of zero emissions for my members, even the ones who have been doing zero emission heavy-duty vehicles, including those in this room, their challenge has been infrastructure. The OEMs will fall all over themselves to deliver you a truck that costs $500,000. I can tell you that much. And Honda doesn't build heavy-duty vehicles. So when we think about how we're going to get these vehicles to market, if you don't have someplace to charge them or fuel them, be it hydrogen, from a zero emission standpoint, I like to say it's just yard art. It's very expensive yard art, but that's all it is at the end of the day. And when we try to engage the state of California, specifically the California Resources Board about their place within the infrastructure deployment, they like to point the finger and say, well, it's not our responsibility, that's the CEC's responsibility. But yet the CEC doesn't show up to these in-use workshops where end users are sitting there asking the ARB what's going to happen with the future of their business. They say, well, don't ask us, go talk to the CEC. And I think that that all has this overarching umbrella on top of it, which has to do with the land use planning. Because if we look historically, we saw the photos in the video, you have warehouses right smack dab in the middle of communities. Who's making those decisions? Well, somebody's permitting that and allowing it to move forward. And as we think about, well, let's try to create some strategic corridors or gateways where we can build out its stuff. We're very, it's very dense down here in Southern California, right? So where we end up going is further and further out. I've heard John Husing talk about back in the day, no one imagined they would go over Kellogg Hill when in, you know, heading out towards the inland empire or even into San Bernardino or Riverside. Now we're moving into Coachella Valley to find more land. So the further we go, and Ramon's right, we need better on-dock rail service, but trucks are never going to go away. I hate to break it to everybody. The other issue is the fact that when we think about land use planning, I've had members who have gone to the city of Long Beach and have tried to get a permit to build out a truck facility where they would have zero emission charging infrastructure for zero emission heavy-duty battery electric trucks. And they were told trucking is And they were told trucking is not a desirable business model for us to encourage. So when we're up against those kind of hurdles from a local planning perspective, I don't know how we win at the end of the day when we have mandates coming from Sacramento that start literally January 1st, 2024. The drainage industry is the first one in the entire state to have to look at zero emission technology for your operations, period. And there's, Port of Long Beach, LA, to a less extent, has been the only real group has been aggressive about looking at available land and where charging infrastructure can go. And my kudos to the port for being very strong and steadfast in their approach to this, because we are all in it together, I agree. But we need more people to the table because they seem to be a little disconnected up in Sacramento.
Thanks, Matt. And for the audience not from here, CEC, California Energy Commission, and CARB, the California Resources Board. You've talked, everybody's talked a lot about collaboration. And Ramon, I wanted to ask you, over your extensive experience with ILWU, what changes have you seen in sort of the environment and arena for collaboration and cooperation to solve some of these challenges?
Well, when I first came in office, immediately contacted the California Air Resources Board because of some of the things that Matt and Heather have been faced with. And there need to be some type of connect. So as labor, we got there together and we worked with the Air Resources Board and one of the terminal operators here in Long Beach, SSA, to see what kind of transition we can do into a cleaner environment and maybe a hybrid thing while we're waiting. What we've seen is some cooperation and sometimes not some cooperation, maybe with AQMD and CARB. We have a lot of agencies that sometimes they're fighting each other, and that happens. And then, and then, and then who's, who gets the hit is the regular, the business and our industry. So instead of people being politically fighting each other, we, like it's been said, we all have to find that small place where that triangle meets, and including our state and federal governments, okay, including railroads. So the collaboration needs to be everybody on the same page. As far as looking ahead, I would rather, and like, it's a great video and a great topic, but I don't think we should chase. I think we should get ahead and think ahead of what we can do. I know that we have done our part, tried to marry as many people together to, and that's what we do as labor, try to get people together so they can talk. And whatever we can do in the future, Matt knows, Heather knows, that we've been trying to be as cooperative possible as labor. We live here, we see it all. So we're ready for it and make sure our government agencies and everybody else involved needs to do the same.
That's great. And you, I like the idea of looking at what's coming that we have to be prepared for. I don't know anybody better than Paul. And Jen, to maybe take on this question, Paul studies this, as does Jen, looking from a research perspective. What trends are coming down the pike? What other external forces do we need to be prepared for that are going to sort of inject themselves into this discussion of sustainability?
Well, the near term is, you know, coming out of the pandemic into an endemic, and we're going to see, you know, some shift back toward services for goods consumption. But, you know, long term, we're still forecasting the fundamentals that have been in place for decades are still going to be there with global population growth, you know, growth in income, challenged by the environmental pressures that exist globally. But that doesn't mean that, you know, the economy or the population doesn't continue to see growth and investment in technology. And this is an environment where globally, the companies are spending more attention now on their own environmental sustainability. If you're a European firm, you file an annual report that's not just your financial condition, but your carbon footprint and your supply chain footprint. And there's an opportunity for Southern California that has, for years, suffered potentially from, you know, the reputation of loss of market share to the East Coast ports to regain some of that in the future, whether it's because of insufficient water to operate the locks in the Panama Canal, or whether it's because of the inability of some of the East Coast and Gulf Coast ports to prepare themselves to have as low of an environmental footprint as we might have with the ports here in Southern California. There's a real opportunity, actually, collectively, as the state can make those decisions and come together to attract investment, which will be possible. There's an enormous amount of capital globally going to what's called these ESG funds, the environmental, social governance model of companies that are not just looking at their financial performance. And investors saying they want to put their funds into companies that meet certain criteria for those standards, not just financial performance. And California is very well positioned to take advantage of that, that potential growth in capital and foreign investment right here in the region to grow some market share and provide, increase in income, provide opportunities for jobs and training, and to pay for some of the costs that we're going to incur to achieve this higher level of environmental performance. And at the same time, have a workforce that's educated and able to benefit from the opportunities that are there. But it's going to be done in a context of growth where there's also an opportunity to miss out. You know, if we don't collectively get the political calculus to be able to reach some agreements on the path forward for policy, for who's going to contribute and make investments, things like retraining of the workforce over the long term, as, you know, technology and other things change, that's all required collectively to make it work and for this region to take advantage of the trends that we all face long term are going to continue to grow. One thing we do know is that the proportion of the world population and the world economy that's represented by the United States will continue to diminish long term as other regions of the world grow faster, which means we're going to become, as a country, increasingly dependent on trade with that faster-growing rest of the world. And that's a real foundation which this region can both understand and then have in the context for the decisions that are made regarding, you know, how we collectively operate in a supply chain world where this community still depends and benefits from participating in that global supply chain function.
Thanks. Jen?
Very quickly, I agree with everything that Paul said. As long as there is no catastrophic economic crash or something like that disaster, the growth that we're seeing, I think, is just going to continue. So as per capita income increases across the world, so does consumption. And so I think we're best off preparing and accommodating or managing than saying, no, it should just go somewhere else because it's got to go somewhere. Secondly, technology is moving really fast. And I think, you know, we haven't really said much about technology, but technology has so much potential for increasing the efficiency of supply chains and for making the productivity of the supply chain increase, which would then reduce some of its impacts that we are trying to reduce. I think we have an uncertain future. People's preferences change, everything changes. Nobody would have predicted what has happened over the last two years, right? And so I think uncertainty is always part of what we have to think about as we plan for the future. And then finally, this is kind of my wish list part of this. I really, I think California's made these great accomplishments on the GHG front. And wouldn't it be nice if we had national policy that was, so that there would be a more level playing field for California and California's economy?
Thanks, Jen. I've got two more questions on my end, so I hope that those of you in the audience who have burning questions are either writing them down on cards for me to read from the podium or getting your questions ready. We'll have a couple of our research assistants moving around the room. But a couple of things before I sort of open it up to you all. The video suggests that we've met the enemy, and it is us, that we have sort of this apparently insatiable demand for goods, it's still on the rise. As Chinese ports begin to reopen, we're expecting more cargo to be coming our way, adding disruption to the system. And so I want to ask about how you all are sort of preparing to accommodate that growth and what it means for sustainability in your world. And I guess I'd like to start with Wilma. A lot of these impacts, as we talked about, are goods movement through the community. So what do you see as sort of being the biggest challenge to, at least the southeast LA area as we see this rise in home delivery and e-commerce?
Yes, first to your comment that you made and then what the video suggests, right? It did definitely hit home for me when I watched the video. I was like, oh, so I am part of the problem. God. So I wanted to put that out there, but I think it's, you know, great video again. It was wonderful. But I think as we think about our region, right, and the community that we represent, really thinking about, I know you mentioned, Jen, like, technology, right? And one of the biggest things that we saw with the pandemic is how technology is leaving so many communities behind, right? One of the things that you will always hear me uplift, right, is not only, you know, the kids and the elderly that are not necessarily, you know, that are impacted by this digital divide, but there's also a sector of our population that does not have any formal education. I always uplift the, you know, and I want to bring attention to that because it personally impacts my family as well, right? So really thinking about those community members that actually don't know how to read or write, right? So as we think about the advancements in all of these opportunities, technology, growth, economic opportunities, what does that look like for these community members, right? I know we just recently had a conversation with the Department of Education, and one of the things that they've highlighted was its data point around they've lost more than 300,000 children in the last two years, right, whether they dropped out of school. So what does that mean for economic mobility, for economic opportunities, for workforce, right? And then so I think these are important pieces that, you know, as we began to kind of address, you know, for the southeast, right, we were the epicenter of COVID, right? Just dramatically impacted by the pandemic. So as we think about the future, one of the things that we have done, because we do represent a regional convener, we're not a service provider, so we do not reach community the way our partners do, but really bringing all these different stakeholders to develop and launch what we call the cell agenda, right? That was really looking at eight policy areas, how they're interconnected, and how we begin, we need to identify investment opportunities across those areas, or one of those being addressing some of these issues that we're discussing here. But again, I think for us is how do we ensure that the community voice is at the table because their experience and their lives are also being impacted by this?
Yeah. Then we have different perspectives on this and accommodating future growth. Maybe Heather, Matt, and then Ramon, sort of talk about what you're doing to prepare, what you see the challenges are moving forward.
Sure. I think, you know, for us, we're making a lot of significant investments in bringing in the cleanest equipment, focusing on demonstrations and putting those new emerging technologies through the paces so we can understand how they can work. At the same time, though, and the last couple of years have really helped to highlight this, that we need to be putting a lot of attention into efficiency improvements and connections throughout the entire supply chain. And we've seen the ripple effect, that you can't just address some of these problems locally. We've had the example of where they had backup in rail in Chicago, and that backed all the way up, or we weren't getting rail cars to be able to load trains and get them out of the port. And so continuing to address, using technology for data sharing, looking at ways that we can continue to work with the entire supply chain partners to make sure that we don't have equipment supply shortages, we've got enough chassis, we've got enough rail cars to continue to move the cargo out of here. We need to keep the cargo moving, and we need that system to continue to function so that we can accommodate what's right around the corner on the next ship that's about to arrive. We also, long term, are really looking at investments and improvements that we can do in our infrastructure to be able to continue to improve the movement of cargo out of this port. Our major capital project that we're working on right now is our PRB on-dock rail support facility, which will help us to be able to better utilize all of the on-dock rail within the port terminals and get more cargo out on rail as well. So I agree, we're not, we're not moving away from trucks. We still need all of it, but we need it all to function as well as it can. And so we need to be looking at the things that we can do in the near term, but continue to have the investment and the focus on the long term as this cargo continues to come.
Thanks, Heather. Matt, and then Ramon?
And I think, and I'll yield some of my time to Ramon, because I know that, you know, you guys are boots on the ground out there. It's a dangerous job. This cargo wouldn't move off the ships or off the dock without you, and it wouldn't move to consumers without our industry. So it's really, this is where the freight starts and ends. And for me, it's always challenging when we're faced with this question, it's like, what are you going to do in the future? Because it really depends on who you ask, depending on the type of answer that you're going to get. And this seemingly ginormous wave of cargo that's going to come from Shanghai, it's perception. A lot of shippers are moving to other ports. Stuff is still coming. Port of LA had its second busiest April in its 115-year history. A lot of these ships are smaller because BCOs have shifted to chartering their own vessels. So we're not in the 24,000 TEU ships, we're less than 10,000. That's what half of the ships that are out here and on their way right now to LA Long Beach are in these smaller, less than 10,000 TEU ships. But guess what? It still needs a berth, it still needs labor, it still needs crane. I still need to be able to figure out how my members are going to create an appointment so they can go pick up that cargo. If we talk about technology and neural networks, I'd like to see that figured out for the appointment systems here in LA and Long Beach, because if you look at it on its face, we have 12 different appointment systems that we work within. Although it's maybe five providers, each individual terminal has its own quirky things that you need to deal with, whether it's a type of chassis you can use, whether it's the hours of gate, whether it's peel pile, there's all sorts of issues that come into our capability, let's say, to be efficient and productive. So if we can start solving those issues with technology on the front-end side, then maybe we can start looking at bigger picture. Because when we talk about climate change, when we talk about energy use, you look at China, their energy footprint has skyrocketed since they decided to become the global manufacturing hub, which we're all now completely dependent upon. There's no such thing as free shipping and all the externalities that come along with it, I think is important to bring into light, whether it's the community groups, whether it's port operations, whether it's labor, whether it's truck drivers, we're all part of this together. Again, I think that that is the one theme I hope that we can all take away from this, that we're not adversarial, that we need to get together to figure out how to move cargo off these docks to get them to people who need them. Because it's not just tube socks, it's medicine, it's PPE, it's other important things beyond just the lifestyles that Americans have become accustomed to, that we are frankly subsidizing for them with our efforts, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. And while Ramon talks, if there are cards, hand them. We've got Ann, Ann, if you could raise your hand, and Si, who are going to be collecting them, and they'll have mics as well. So you can run them up to me if we have questions, but Ramon, we'd love to hear how, what's the, what are the Longshoremen doing?
Okay, let's just make it real simple. For the majority of the supply chain deals with a box. How do you move that box? How does it go? It's really simple, okay? A simple thing. Now, there's a quick term, there's a midterm, and there's a long-term resolution. And I'll give you the three. First of all, the LWU is already prepared. We were prepared in August of 2020. We expedited crane training for the truck delivery only, 250 skilled operators. Where normally it takes you to drive all the crane to get certified as a crane operator, the overhead of the ship is called a ship-to-shore crane, we just pushed that aside and we got 250 of our members to be qualified enough to handle a safe, working delivery in the yard transainers. That was done ahead of time. We were prepared for this. We, it's proven because we continue to break records amidst the pandemic and this congestion. So we're ready. And what we're trying to say is everybody else needs to get on the same pace. And that's kind of like, it's not like saying like we're all Superman, but this is what we do. We just, all we do is move boxes. We've been doing this for years, decades. And we understand that part. So the midterm solution would be some location where, for example, in Matt's industry, you drop off an empty container somewhere in the inland ports and play where you can stack it, because we have plenty of empties. You drop it off there, freeze up a chassis. You go into the port, you grab out an import, take it out. That's one less container there. Right now, Matt's people are struggling to find a place to drop off an empty and then take another one out, one in, one out. It's like the hamster on the wheel. We stay congested, we're densified. That's what's happening. So in order to free up chassis and equipment, that's some of the problems. And I don't know what to do with the rail, that's still a problem. Maybe you got to make more Gondola cars, that's not going to happen. So in the meantime, the midterm solution would be an inland port, land at someplace where it's unincorporated. We need to figure that out, and the government has to help there, right? If that's what we need to do to make some progress. And in the long term, everybody has to get on board to rail board to rail system and bridges. So communities aren't affected. They might be affected for the bridges and rail, but it'll clean up less trucks on the road. There's still going to be trucks, but that's another transition. And the bar for this environmental for 2030 is not going to cut it. We're not, I'm going to just give it straight. And, and we want to have clean air, but we're not going to make the 2030. And everybody's rushing to get there. Electrification is not the answer. We're looking at alternative fuels. So those are some of the things we're involved in. Hydrogen is an alternative fuel. We're, we're deeply, we're moving forward with that. So we're looking into helping to find out what the alternative fuels are, because we just had a battery fire at L B C T two days ago. And, and these things are run on batteries. So what do you do with the battery? And, and how do you maintain it? And, and then it becomes environmentally unsafe. So these are some of the things we're looking at. Thank you.
Thanks, Ramon. We have a question from the floor, and I've got a couple of good ones on the card, so.
Hi there. Good morning. My name is Dave Browning. I'm from Tailor Made Golf. We're an importer. Maybe a little more golf equipment, not quite as important as medicine, a little more important tube socks.
Depends on who you talk to.
Depends who you ask.
Hey, so question. But first of all, this is fascinating from us, from importers, and commend you guys all coming together to push the volumes that you have pushed in the last couple of years. It's incredible. So I think Paul mentioned at one point, sometimes, at some point, the state of California, certainly with the good and the bad, creating a lot of challenges for the port in terms of the E S G and being able to continue the volumes. I think Paul mentioned at some point, trade could go elsewhere, the, the, the business could go elsewhere. And, and certainly, I think Mark, Mark was mentioning the, the infrastructure needs for the, the trucking, and certainly Ramon with the, the freight or the, the rail needs to, to do a better job of bringing the product. So where, where, where do you guys see the states that are the most friendly and, and the potential competition for the ports, you know, in the 20, 30 years of where that business could shift if California doesn't help the port more to be able to do its, manage its growth to move more volume?
Great. Paul, do you want to start? You have thoughts on that?
Well, I think, you know, it's a lot hypothetical in terms of where it could go, but we can look at what's already happened. You know, during the pandemic, we saw initially, you know, growth in share on the West Coast when importers coming out of that recession in the beginning of 2020 needed to get goods onshore as quickly as they could with that surge in orders. So they brought it to the West Coast. It's still going to be the fastest route into the, into the continent. You know, bring it across the water and get it on land as quickly as you can. Don't keep it on the water through Panama or Suez. That doesn't change long-term. That advantage is sustained for the, the region where we're still going to be trading with Asia. It may not all be with China, but, you know, the, the big population, the big growth, long-term globally in, in the, in the entire world is going to be with Asia. So that doesn't change in terms of Trans-Pacific being the center of the trade links. But that doesn't mean that we couldn't see shifts, you know, outside of the California ports. It could go up the coast to British Columbia, you know, with global warming. Maybe you're going to see some more ports, more viable, more of the year-round, you know, even the, the year-round port of Prince Rupert already. Or potentially, you could see something like, you know, in Mexico, we could have some ports to take off there beyond what's been, you know, an aspirational dream for a long time for them, serving other parts of the country, you know? And I think there are still threats of routes through Panama, Suez, to the Gulf and the East Coast. So there, there is almost, you know, there's very little cargo that truly has to come through Southern California to serve the local market. There's a lot that could come another way to serve the rest of the country. So there's still potentially more market share that could be lost in all the associated business and jobs and, and other attributes that come with that loss of business for the region. But as I said earlier, you know, there's also a story where the region regains share. One of the, the potential in, in that regard is the limitations on the size of the Panama Canal, where there's a maximum size ship on the larger locks. And there are many ships today that are larger than those locks. You could be back to where you were before the canal expanded in terms of larger vessels calling West Coast ports, where the natural first protocol is going to be right here in Southern California. So I'll, I'll leave it at that, Tom, but we could go into more.
And Ramon, and then Jen, yeah?
Yeah, briefly. Great foresight, Paul. Canada, Prince Rupert, he mentioned. Now, a T E U is a 20 equivalent unit. That's how we measure how many containers. Canada moves 18,000 T E Us per acre. The average movement here is anywhere from 4,000 to 6,000 T E Us per acre. That's a big difference. There are three times, because they go direct to rail. Now, Canada is in the process of purchasing, purchasing the K C rail, which goes from the Midwest down into Mexico. So they go through Chicago, and they potentially could be one of the ports that with the global warming, great foresight, could be a viable port for, because they're ahead of the game. They're getting into the rail. Now, if you look at a map of rail, look at the map and see all the rails. You look at the Midwest to the East Coast, ah, tons of rail. You look at from the Midwest to the West Coast, very few. Our nation has not invested the rail aspects into California. And the rail, they're, they're exposed now. They're, the just-in-time is not there anymore. This is something that we have to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you. Jen?
Just very briefly, we could also look at what the trends have been over the last 10, 15 years. And that tells us that the loss of market share is actually going east to the Gulf Coast, some of the Gulf Coast parts, and on the East Coast. And, you know, the, the lesson to think about is New York. Back in the old days, New York was the major port in the United States. It today really only serves its local population. And that could happen as well in Los Angeles. But as Paul said, there's, there's just a lot of opportunities, and it's all very uncertain. But there is the competition out there. There's no question about that.
I could just add something quick, sort of in the, in the context of sustainability and the, the topic of this panel, shifting cargo out of this port to ports that don't have as clean of equipment, or that take a longer route on the vessel and produce more greenhouse gas emissions to get there, isn't solving the problem. And so it's something that, going back to the comment that Jen made about the national freight policy, we should not be looking at ways to try to avoid doing the right thing to do. We have urgency to take action, and we need to benefit all the communities that surround ports and make sure that we're investing in these technologies everywhere.
And, and I like where Heather's coming with that, from, from with that, because it's, again, it's a, this is a supply chain community. But business owners are making decisions about their bottom line. And, you know, when Tailor Made or whatever import is asking, well, so what are these other ports besides L A Long Beach anyways that everybody's using? Not to accuse you guys of diverting cargo, but I think that it's a consistent theme. I have members who are going and touring Charleston, who are going touring Houston, and those as operating ports have a much different, I guess, bag of tools to approach infrastructure build-out. It's like, oh, you want a warehouse? Sure, no problem. How much land do you want? We'll have that, we'll tilt that thing up in a matter of weeks. Where we don't have that luxury here because it's so densely compacted. So I feel like diversion is, is a real thing, especially as we look with the new queuing system. It could potentially take you longer to get to L A Long Beach because of slow steaming than it could to go through the Panama Canal and train stuff back into California. Now, does that not go in line with the sustainability and E S G goals that we all should be thinking about? No. But at the same time, if I'm a business owner, I'm an importer, and I'm worrying about my bottom line because of our insatiable appetite for cheaper, faster, and now, that I'm going to make that decision based upon how much bottom line I'm going to have to maintain. So it's a good point. And so, Mark, by the way, I think you owe me a free golf bag for.
Wait, Stacy, you had a question in the back or somewhere? Yeah.
Hello. My name is Faisal Malum. I'm a student from the University of New Orleans. I, I just wanted to ask whether the Trump tariff affected cargo volumes that comes through the port, especially cargo that comes from China?
The impact of the Trump tariffs on cargo volumes on the West Coast. Paul, do you have any thoughts on that?
It's, it's clear during the pandemic that it didn't impede an enormous amount of trade, but there's no question that, you know, that raised the import prices of the goods to which those tariffs have applied. And perhaps more importantly, from an economic perspective, the retaliatory tariffs imposed on U S exporters has hit our export volumes. So it's actually a two-way impact because of the reality of the way those tariffs have played out. And they're still in place with, you know, the exception of, of a very few that have been changed by the Biden administration. Those raise the cost of the imports, which tends to reduce the volume. And it's very hard to tell in the pandemic that it reduced any trade volume. But if we look at a baseline of what we were before the pandemic, there's clearly in some of those categories, the long-term impacts is it'll tend to impede the trade with those countries for whom we are importing with those tariffs, as opposed to, say, Mexico or Canada under the U S M C A that are not subject to those same tariffs on imports. So it has a real impact long-term if those stay in place. I don't know, with recent signals from the Biden administration, maybe there's going to be some flexibility, but we're not there yet. And it could be that long-term, you know, those kind of tariffs are going to stay in place. And now overlay that with the, the entire embargo on trade with Russia and the, and the disruption of trade with Ukraine, which affects us indirectly, but has an echo in terms of that price effect on trade, where you raise the commodity prices, that affects the, you know, consumer elasticity of demand in economic terms of how much quantity you buy. So that has a real impact. It stays in place as long as those tariffs are there.
I've got a question here on the card, which I think is a good one about workforce. I'm going to pitch it to Matt and then, and Wilma. The, the question, first question is sort of about labor shortages that we've been hearing about. And Matt, I'm curious whether, in fact, we've got a, a labor shortage in trucking, or whether there's a, a series of, of factors at play that we should be thinking about. And then, Wilma, from your perspective, what aren't we doing that we should be doing to make sure that workforce opportunities through the, through the supply chain community are made available to, to the communities of Southeast L A? So, Matt?
And I'll keep it relatively brief. Now, our industry is always looking for qualified drivers. There is no doubt about that, always, every single day. You'll see the advertisements on trailers, you'll see them around locally. Some of these men and women are making more over the past 12, 18 months than they have previously. But I wouldn't say necessarily it's as acute of a driver shortage issue as they see in the over-the-road sector. It's more of a productivity issue. And there's many things that go into extended turn times down at the harbor. But if I have a, a driver, doesn't matter whether you're asset-based with employee drivers, or a non-asset-based owner-operator small fleet, you're still, as a business, being compensated by the number of containers that you're moving. And if I'm only able to move one container a day, that's not very efficient. So if we can think of better ways to try to maximize the existing pool that we have, and I'll tell you that the state of California does not make it easy between the in-use diesel emission mandates, the upcoming zero emission standards, the A B five concept to eliminate the ability of owner-operators to operate under an overlying motor carriers authority, all of these things, along with some of the experiences that they have with the legendary congestion of Southern California, and some of the challenges that we see, which are a lot of systems driven within the terminals themselves, and their decisions on how much labor that they are going to actually hire that particular day, not a reflection on longshore necessarily. So all these things, I feel it's more of a productivity shortage as opposed to a driver shortage. But again, we're always looking for qualified drivers. We will bring them in, we will train them. There's apprenticeship programs that are starting up. It's a great career. You don't need to have advanced education to start off in this. And I will tell you, the largest trucking companies in this country started with one person, one truck. Even Malcolm McClain, the guy who invented the container, which I don't know how all of us feel about that still, blame the trucking industry really at the end of the day. He was one man, one truck. That's how he started his business. So we can't remove that opportunity away. And really, a lot of the policies are driving towards that end, where you're going to remove the ability of these mom-and-pop operators to continue to operate. Maybe that rising tide lifts all boats, but either way, we are trying to attract more people into our industry on a daily basis. But I think, feel it's more productivity than anything else.
Thanks, Matt. Dr. Franco?
Yes. I think one of the things that we need to do better in is, is really the workforce development pipeline programs. I think oftentimes we think we're just creating, people will come. Well, that's not really what happens, right? The way that I really kind of think about these programs is oftentimes, you know, very similar to like my undergrad experience, I never took an internship. One, because I thought, you know, I'm not going to do free labor if I have to feed my family, if I have to help my, my parents, right? And then so similar to that, I think as we think about workforce development, you know, as we invest in pipeline programs, we need to start doing that now, right? Like, so for example, one of the conversations we have in Sela, because the, you know, Metros expanding its rail through the Southeast, right? What are those workforce development pipeline programs that are being developed? We have not necessarily heard of any, right? And then so how do we make those opportunities accessible to our community, right? And then so those are, I think, big issues, right? But also thinking about, you can't, if the incentive is go through this training program because you'll have a job at the end, you're not meeting the needs of community, which is I need to feed my family today, and I need to be housed today, right? Because if not, we're adding to the problem of poverty, and we're also adding to the potential homelessness issues as we think about the future, right? So I think we have to think about how do we begin to prepare the workforce for that? I think the other piece is also for, just historically, right, and I used to be in that space myself, right, in education. We continue to say, go to university, go to, you know, four-year institution, but we're not necessarily really promoting like trade jobs. And there's different type of opportunities that are also careers, right? And really supporting students that actually want to go into this field and see that as, as a benefit versus, oh, well, you didn't go to a, you know, UCLA or USC, right? Really thinking about how do we change that narrative to make sure that if there's students that want to go into this field, that they have those opportunities to do so.
Thanks. Stacy, you have a question in the back. And I also want to encourage our A G L students to submit a question on the card. I want to make sure we get a, we get one from the, from the perspective of our, of our young people. Or raise your hand, and we'll get you on, on mic. But I want to, I want to make sure that we, we hear from you as well. But in the, in the back.
Yes. My name's Sylvester Trailer, ex-retired probation officer. I'm here with one of my colleagues. We're more here or less to observe, you know, the town hall meeting regarding where we come from. As far as like from the mountain to the sea, how does this affect everyone in between? Just like the lady in the video says, from Wilmington, the kids are being, you know, hidden with the emissions and being, you know, in the hospitals and all this going on. But our real concern is, we're talking about like the shipping part of it, where, hey, you know, it's kind of ironic where you can have the lava rolling to the sea. How easy is that? Where, you know, where the hubs should be, where people should be looking at things coming from above down to the cities, you know? Instead of everybody using gas to get up, you know, to the mounting top, it's a lot harder going that way than coming down with, like, say, for instance, fuel, you know, feeding our cities with the, everything that we need to supply and, you know, for the demand of everybody. But just like everybody passes by the 10 freeway, you see the general hospital sitting up there, and it's been dormant for over 30 years, just like an ice or, well, why couldn't that be a hub up there or something to feed the city, you know, like an octopus with tentacles coming down? Because whatever we need to inject, it would be like Mr. Ramon said up there, you know, De León. Hey, you know, we can start from the grassroots, you know? I come from the inner city, and we've seen stuff out there that, like I said, I was maybe born a mile from the general hospital. And you've seen all around us, carnation where we get our milk from. We're having problems with that now. The formula with the kids. All this stuff has to be moved, you know, through our, you know, ports, through our airports. And right now, you know, it's a, these are things we need to address, because it's really, really, at this time of our lives, we haven't seen nothing like this. But like I said, we're here today to just get more insight to where, you know, we can move ahead. You know, the planet is crying right now, and we're all on standby. So it's time for us to move forward, just like Mr. De León said. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, yeah. I have a question here on the card about the, the commercial availability and viability of the technology that's going to require, be required to implement the mandates. I imagine, Heather, do you have any?
I imagine other folks on the panel might have some comments on this too, but it is true. We're, we're putting a lot of emphasis right now in developing this equipment that's never been developed, looking at new technologies and applying them for the first time out in the, the terminals and out on the roadways, putting them through their paces to identify where improvements continue to need to be made, and, and making sure that they can actually do the operation so that we can keep cargo moving. And while we're working on this technology advancement and development phase, we're also needing to act with urgency. also needing to act with urgency because we've got timelines that are eight to 13 years away for when we need to have full conversion of this. That's not very long considering we're still in that pilot testing phase and we need to install the infrastructure to make sure that that's in place to be able to support this. So it is a very aggressive timeline and that's where I think the, the need, sorry, I felt the shaking, I was like, what's happening? Stunned silence. But that's where I think we all need to be working together. And we talked about the need for the, the state and the federal government to have a role in this. And I think since the desire is to move forward with a really aggressive pace and, and urgent action, we're going to need a lot of funding support to be able to get there because these technologies are incredibly expensive. The market is still in its infancy and so we don't have the benefit of, of used equipment that can be purchased for a cheaper price and a larger market where this equipment can be sold. And so there are a lot of challenges, but, but there is a need for us to continue to focus on this and get these pieces of equipment developed and put into use as quickly as possible. So that's where our challenge really is right now, is working through those paces so that we can be ready as quickly as possible to bring in this equipment.
Thanks. Matt?
Thank you. I could spend the rest of the morning on, on this exact subject. I mean, I think to try to parse it out initially here, a truck is, not a truck is not a truck, a truck is not a bus, okay? When we think about the individual segments of heavy-duty diesel users today, we have a segment that is ripe for electrification. And that being the last-mile package delivery folks who have dedicated routes and a place to park overnight to utilize the cheapest electricity distribution at a lower charge rate. That is where the effort should be focused by the state of California in moving that industry ahead first. Instead, they're moving to the drayage side of things, which again, there's community issues and there's climate issues. Sometimes they can be opposed to each other just from a sense that, well, I still got to mine the earth for the batteries, it's not necessarily the same as digging for petroleum-based products, right? Well, we don't want renewable natural gas because it's going to create more refining capacity. Well, I can tell you that Arizona and Nevada don't have oil refineries, so no matter what, we're still going to be refining oil here locally to export out to those markets. So we look at the drayage segment and now we get into this issue of range and weight. Because range anxiety, as we like to refer to it as, is basically if I'm, if an OEM is telling me today, you have about 150 miles of effective range, 200 on a good day, maybe downhill both ways, right? That means that I need to plan my routes about 200 miles. There's a lot of things that go into that total range. Is there a lot of braking? What is the technology utilizing for regenerative braking, for battery charging? Then where do I charge along the way? Because there is not public-facing charging infrastructure. And right now, you don't have fuel providers jumping out to try to get in front of this to build public fueling stations because right now the technology to fuel is not a fast charge situation. The highest you can get is 350 kilowatt hour charging, which means you can, it'll take you about 45 minutes maybe to get to 80% charge, state of charge. And I don't know, if it took us, you all 45 minutes to fill up your cars, you probably wouldn't be driving. And so now we have to think about all of these things together. Not saying that our industry can't do it, again, I think that TTSI and one of the reasons why, why Vic is, is being awarded this is because he's been very proactive about looking at this technology and seeing how it can fit into his fleet. One large portion of their fleet is based on renewable natural gas. This is a carbon negative fuel that has basically been sidestepped by the state of California to go right to a zero emissions component, zero emission standpoint. For drayage first, 1124, there are no other standards in this state that require use of zero emission vehicles except for drayage. And that's not just LA Long Beach, that's Stockton, Wayne Me, Sacramento, San Diego, Martinez, Benicia, all the intermodal rail yards. And that is where they want to start. They put it under saying it's near-term exposure for communities, but I'll tell you guys, guess what? It's not just trucks that cause pollution in the supply chain, okay? Just a heads up. So now as we are moving to this next phase of technology, really the vehicles, well, they're coming a long way, but it's a much easier part of the equation as opposed to the massive gigawatt capable, needed gigawatts that this grid is going to have support, which by the way, is still fueled by 30% non-renewable natural gas and coal, okay? So if I'm charging my electric truck on coal, I don't see how that plays out from a sustainability standpoint. Nevertheless, when we think about the weight capability, if you want more range, you need more batteries. If you have more batteries, you haul less freight, which means you got more trucks on the road. So you might not have the same brake dust, but you're going to have tire wear because there's more torque from those electric motors, which are going to break down tire wear. And what shut down the 710 project was brake dust and tire wear. So anyways, I could go on for a while.
So Jen, and then I'm going to give the last question to an AGL student, who has a really good one, it's going to be for Paul. And then there's a bunch of really good ones here. My commitment to you is that we will do a summary and continuous dialogue in a CITT poster blog because there's too much good stuff here. And I also wanted to ask you a question, I won't ask, but we, I will engage you for the blog in that for those of us in education, what part of the story do we get wrong most often about the stuff that you do? But so Jen, you wanted to comment and then Paul, it's a question about, so you can prepare, inflation, the impact of inflation and what it means for the supply chain. So Jen, no, but you, I wanted to ask you about the, the commercial viability question first, sorry.
Okay, just very quickly, you won't be surprised when I say, sorry, we really need to do more careful research as this is moving forward. In our own research, we've, we discovered exactly what Matt was actually talking about. We made some estimates and found that you would have to have many more trucks on the road if you actually were to electrify a significant amount of the fleet because of the range and weight issues. We've also done a study that looked at electrification of cargo handling equipment. That would be also very, very expensive and it would also require more equipment because of this, these range issues and duration issues. So it, my vote is actually that we, we do, Port's doing a great job of piloting things and, you know, TTSI and everybody else is doing a great job of piloting. It's really good to be able to tend to look at the details of how those pilots are going so that we can get a more realistic estimate of what it will actually cost to do some of these things. And the grid is exactly the same. We need to be doing much more careful research on what exactly will be required to do it and how we get there.
Thanks, Jen. And the, the last question before we move on to the Moretti Award comes from our AGL students. And Paul, they're interested in what the impact of rising or decreasing inflation will mean for all of the things that we've talked about today.
Well, it's an enormous topic, but I'll try to, I'll try to touch on it quickly. We're facing, you know, 40-year-high inflation in this country. Inflation inherently has a disproportionate impact on lower-income households because they tend to spend a higher proportion of their income on consumption. So it's already going to make worse the situation that we've already faced in the pandemic where the lower-income population has suffered more. It has an impact on consumption as you shift, as you have lower effective disposable income, it shifts the consumption towards the necessities more like fuel and food and less away from durable goods that tend to move in containers. Another aspect of inflation is that it raises inventory carrying costs for companies, which may push back against the, what we've seen the shift towards just-in-case rather than just-in-time inventory strategies during the pandemic. That, if, if inflation is sustained over a long period of time, there's also the risk of what's called stagflation, where you have higher inflation and slower economic growth. And fundamentally, one of the biggest challenges is for workers where their incomes may be going up, but not as much as inflation, which means in inflation-adjusted terms, they're taking a pay cut. Their incomes are actually in real terms and buying power going down. And that's what we're suffering right now in this country. And that has implications for, you know, greater pressures on the workforce and ultimately on employers in trying to adequately compensate, you know, their workforce in the face of increasing costs that they face as well. So it's very disruptive across the economy, but I should also add, the central bank is not unaware of this, the Federal Reserve Board is taking steps to raise interest rates to try to fight inflation, you know, the pattern after the policy responsibilities of the central bank policy from 40 years ago. And it's not just the United States, we have faced inflation worldwide. So this is an impact, something that we can't even control entirely within the United States. And one last impact of inflation, it does affect our exchange rates of the dollar. That affects the competitiveness of US exporters trying to sell in overseas currency terms and it affects the attractiveness of imports based on import prices translated from prices from other overseas countries. And if you want to talk about this more afterwards, I'll be happy to talk to anybody one-on-one afterward on this.
Thanks, Paul, and great questions. Please, I, we could go on for a long time about this, but I want to thank you all for your knowledge, expertise and your willingness to be part of, of the town hall. We do have a thank you memento. We, Dan Froelich, who does the design for all of our banners each year, really creates a memorable illustration of the topic. And we have something that we want you to take away as a, as a reminder of your, of your time spent with us this morning. So thank you, thank you, everyone. It was a fascinating panel and it was informative and truly in the, the spirit of education. And this is what the late Dominic Moretti, an original member of the Policy and Steering Committee for, for CITT, meant when he said he wanted to bring the university to the docks and the docks to the university. Dominic was instrumental in the development of the town hall and making sure that the ILWU was at the table from the beginning. In fact, the, the town hall started life as the ILWU State of the Trade and Transportation Town Hall. And I know he would have been pleased that Ramon continued that tradition by being part today. Dominic was something of a waterfront Renaissance man, as your program indicates. He was a proud longshoreman, a proud graduate with his bachelor's and master's degree from Cal State Long Beach, Go Beach. He also received his PhD from UCLA. He split his days on the docks, first as a member of Local 13 and then as a shipping clerk for Local 63, with time spent in the classroom as a teacher at Dotson Junior High, Junior High, and then as Dr. Moretti, a professor at East LA Los Angeles, East Los Angeles College, where he helped to establish the International Trade Program. He was passionate about education, understanding that there was something new to learn about the industry, no matter how long you had worked in it or lived in its shadow. He was one of my first teachers in the industry and his legacy is, is long and deep. The Moretti Award was created by CITT in his memory to recognize someone who has helped to foster partnerships along the supply chain, facilitate dialogue, and has demonstrated long-term dedication to the industry and earned the respect of a wide variety of stakeholders. We are honored to have past winners, Jen Giuliani, and I believe, not sure if she's here, Vivian Malau, last year's winner, with us. Thank you for being here. This year's recipient is Vic LaRosa, who you've already heard mentioned this morning. Vic is the co-founder and president of Total Transportation Services, Inc., TTSI, founded in 1986. And in order to provide a wide range of, of international freighting services, he opened multiple divisions to support warehousing, brokerage, airfreight, LTL, FTL, port operations and, and drayage. And TTSI is now one of the largest port drayage companies in the region. And most important perhaps for this discussion, a leader in sustainability as a successful business model. He's a co-founder of the Coalition for Responsible Transportation. The Coalition for Clean Air recently recognized Vic as a visionary in helping spur the conversation of diesel trucks to alternative fuels. And TTSI was awarded the California Air Quality Award for its corporate environmental stewardship. In her nomination, Jolene Hayes from Farr &amp; Pierce, happy birthday, Jolene, by the way, it's Jolene's birthday today. Recognized Vic is a true industry leader and community partner through actively listening to his customer needs and working with public agencies, researchers, the community to better understand the impacts of freight operations. He's been a willing partner and an advocate for, for clean trucks and beyond. And then one other comment I think Jolene made was that he's created a culture at TTSI, sort of a family culture, that where it's not only permitted but encouraged for everyone else at the company to, to do the same. And that support includes the education sector. Vic has been a tremendous supporter of CSULB and CITT, including entrusting us with two of his sons, who are both here, who studied logistics in our programs. Nick is here today to speak on his father's behalf. Nick is followed in his father's footsteps. He's operations manager at Everport Terminal Services and we're pleased you can join us.
Vic LaRosa could not be here today and as his son, I am proud to accept this award on his behalf. My father is honored to receive the Dominic Moretti Award and join a prestigious group of awardees. He would like to thank Jolene Hayes for the nomination and the ILWU for their support. He is proud of their great achievements that have been made working together. Vic would also like to thank the review committee. Sustainability and education are Vic's key areas of focus and he believes that building a better future begins with investing in our community. For over a decade, he has worked to eliminate harmful truck emissions in our world by embracing alternative fuels, technologies, and creating partnerships with labor to facilitate the development of driver training programs while inspiring and educating future generations. He thanks you all again.
Thank you, Nick and Vic and everybody else at, at TTSI, please, please send, please send your dad our best wishes. Finally, before we adjourn, I have one more recognition I'd like to make. This is the last town hall for Dr. Giuliani as Met Trans Director. We will be in good hands with Marlon Bornet, our, the incoming director. But Jen helped CITT's founding executive director, Mary Ann Venerus Gastellum, grow this event and with Met Trans's financial support and other support over the years, helped ensure that it reaches an audience beyond our region. As a member of our Policy and Steering Committee, she's provided constant support for the work of CITT and personally been a mentor to me from my days as her PhD candidate and then her guidance through our time together as, as colleagues. Jen, all of us at CITT and CSULB want to thank you for being a partner, a friend and leader and we, which you must, we wish you much enjoyment doing your own research and working with students. Jen's not really going anywhere, she's just handing off the, the reins. So I could have you come up, we have a little something for you.
My own people. Anyway, thank you, everybody. That's, it's a wonderful recognition, I'm humbled. It's been a great experience for me and I've enjoyed every single one of these town halls and I'll probably come back next year anyway, even though, you know, I don't have to. But thank you all so much, I really appreciate it and I'm so glad to see all of you here in person. So thank you.
And thank all of you for, for being part of this discussion today. As we conclude, just a couple of reminders, we will be posting the video after this event. It will be available on our website, there will be a link and we encourage you to share it as a, in the spirit in which it was developed, which is as a valuable educational tool. And again, thank you to Dave Kelly and the AM team and Dave Puskett for... thank you to Dave Kelly and the AM team and Dave Puskett for, for putting it all together. If you have not gotten your parking validated, please see Ari and team in, in the back. We owe a great deal of gratitude to, to many, many people who've dedicated time and effort and money to make it happen. I want to thank first and foremost Ari Copeland, our talented event coordinator, and her amazing team, including Naomi Suzuki, Marissa Idy, Elizabeth Warren here. Ari stepped in when Alex Traver retired. I know many of you worked with Alex over the years, and she's done an amazing job on both the town hall and INOF. Her week has just started. And I want to thank our team of CITT, including the research assistants who are here helping out this week. We have an amazing group of students. And including, I, I realize we have some of our MAGL and MA and MSSCM graduates here too. So I want to thank you for being here as well. I want to mention again that today's event is hosted by CITT, the College of Professional and Continuing Education, and the Met Trans Transportation Consortium. Thank you again to USDOT and Caltrans for your support. Our reimagining Freight Week sponsors, which again, please, are, they're listed on your program. Thank you as all for your, for your support throughout the year. And our Met Trans associates. And a final thank you to our Policy and Steering Committee, which over the course of a year shepherds this event, provides input on the script, comments on the video, and helps us get the sponsorships that make this possible. Thank you for coming today. I hope you found the information of value. We hope to see you at next year's event, and we stand adjourned. And please, if you're, if you're networking, we want, our students will be here for a little while too. We want them to take advantage of having an opportunity to, to meet with all of you. So thank you again, and have a good day. Safe, safe drive.